Hello everyone.
Hi.
I'm just gonna welcome you to the annual reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. And if everyone is so inclined, please stand for the pledge. Thank you. I will need a motion for, to appoint Elena Mascol to the position of District Clerk for the 2021 school year. I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Bruce, would you mind giving me the oath, please?
It would be my pleasure.
I, Elena Mascol, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability. Okay. So now that we have a clerk, we are going to have, I'm gonna call for nominations for the Board, Office of the Board President for the Red Oak Central School District for the fiscal 2021-2022 school year. And voting will be held by verbal public vote. Do I have any nominations? Oh gosh, I'm sorry. You're right. You can't do that before we swear the Board members, because the Board members have to vote, the new board. So we will take, um, Mark Maroney, who was elected to the Board of Education, as well as Eric Masassi, and we will do their votes, one by one.
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of a Member of the Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Great. Congratulations. Okay, great. Now, yeah, now, aye. I do. I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of a Member, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability. Okay. Now that we have a seven-member board, congratulations, everyone. Now, sorry, Bruce, I'm actually doing this. I'm gonna call for nominations for the Office of President of the Red Oak Central School District Board of Education for the fiscal 2021-22 school year. Can I get a nomination from anyone?
Um, before I make my nomination, there's something that I would like to just say, say, and, and the reason why I'm nominating this person. The way that we see the world, imagine, um, at any particular moment, we're lost, we will do. The last eighteen months were like no other. Boards across the state and the nation, um, have encountered an unceivable pandemic issues. Excepting the challenges, an ever-changing land state required us to adapt and be flexible in our operations, but not to our focus, which was the health and safety of our children, employees, and our community. Perhaps we not always stopped the results of the reporting for, but, um, our state presented guidelines which we had to follow in order to operate. It says standards, and, uh, for the first time, we really realized how much we really needed one another. I personally want to thank Kate Corpus for her leadership, and our self-imposed navigate many turbulent times, uh, attached here. Moving forward as a board, I think we need to renew our sensitivity by supporting each other, and the decisions we collectively make. We build trust in each other, we set future goals, and called our administration accountable to implement these goals. While the forums of public and charity with one another are lost collaboratively made, and with the freedom to try again, if we are much successful. So I would like to nominate Kate Corpus for President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please, uh, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carried. Kate, you are the new President of the Board of Education. Congratulations. Okay, I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, great. Congratulations. One more for me, and then I get to hand it over. I will take nominations for the Office of Board Vice President for the fiscal 2021-22 school year. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Russ Crapden, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, uh, other nominations? Any discussion?
Um, I just wanted to say also, um, hold on one second. Sorry. Go ahead. I just wanted to say, uh, that I, I think that this task was very challenging for the board and that both felt, like, putting a kind of precedent last year to the example of managing things to the best of their ability. I would love to see the same team carry forward in the coming year as well, and, um, I know that Patty has been very vocal and communicative, um, regularly with board issues, and advocates a great deal, and I would just love to see her in that position again for one more year, um, with her experience and, um, possibly her final year, if it's not, but, um, so I would just, I would love to see her in that role, and we'll keep Kate, um, as a partner. Um, but that said, I also support members of new experiences, so I'd like to give that
Is that a nomination or just a discussion? Okay, wait, okay, sorry. Sorry, I'm, I'm.
Um, I just want to say that, um, as a board, um, board culture is very important. It needs to be sustained and built upon with S and O and S and R, um, standards and norms, and ask the new generations of trustees, um, magnifying our, um, tier three and the senior term. I think moving forward with the idea of setting compliance within our governance, um, allows other trustees to step off the general rope, and I think that's very important, and, um, that's why I support the nomination of Ross Crapden, so that he can gain the experience to lead the district as a board.
Any other discussion? Okay, none being heard. So, uh, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Yes. That's the only nomination on the table, sorry. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, congratulations, Russ. I'll come down and give you the.
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, now my most favorite part of any meeting of the whole entire year, and I'm gonna read over the day and come back.
Thank you, Elena. I definitely want to encourage all of us to lean into our mics, because I'm seeing some people say, "I can't hear," so just, I know it's a little awkward, but we can lean in for the folks at home, because we are live streaming. So, welcome, everybody. We have a lot of pro forma work to move through, so we're going to try to get through it, and I would probably look to groups, um, to highlight the important parts for the newbies and the folks at home, um, and then we'll get to our regular agenda once we continue, we finish with the reorg meeting. Okay? So, I believe we are, uh, the next thing we need to do is elect a representative to the Duchess County Board Association, correct? And that really is a member of the board who is willing to attend to the monthly meeting, a monthly meeting for the counties, so that brings together, do you want to talk about it for a second, Joe?
Um, the Duchess County School Board comprises of thirteen component districts to BOSEs, and we meet the first Thursday of every month. These meetings will resume, and, um, now we'll go back to meeting down at their self up event.
You want to do it again, Johanna, or does somebody else want to take this role?
I'd be willing to do it again, but I also think that the alternate, um, the alternate person is not once in a while to meet them, compared to.
Anybody have interest in being the alternate candidate? All right, Russ.
I think I was the alternate.
Probably were. Okay, so I need a motion and a second to accept, uh, Johanna as the lead and Russ as the backup for the Duchess County Board Association. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
And a second? I got, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number three, the audit. I need a motion and a second to approve that whereas the State of New York has mandated that each school district Board of Education create an audit committee to be in place prior to January 1st. Do you want to say anything more on that?
Well, I would just point out that, uh, for the entire time that this has been a mandate, um, we have been a five-member board, and we have done the audit committee as a committee of the entire board. It's been a relatively inactive committee. Uh, they, they do the, the basic work of, uh, conducting the required activities leading up to and during audits. There are other options, so, um, what this would be, would be following our past practice, and we would have the entire seven-member board being the committee of the entire board as the audit committee. Uh, we could certainly during the course of the year, or next year when we get to this time, talk about what some of the other options are for forming, forming an audit committee.
Does anybody have any questions for Bruce? Okay, so I still need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, I need a motion and a second to approve the following. Be it resolved, the Board of Education shall adopt the most recent rotational list of impartial hearing officers established by the State Education Department, including any updates made by the department during the school year. Any other color on that?
Unless there are questions, no.
So can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We, we just re, I don't know, we were intentionally circling back to that one?
I apologize. No, we'll talk, please. You threw me off. Okay, sorry. Number three, motion and a second to approve the following. Be it resolved, the Board of Education establish regular five-monthly meetings of the Red Oak Central School Board of Education, day, week, uh, the day of the week will be the fourth Wednesday's time, 6:00 PM, for executive, 7:00 PM for public, place, actually, probably here, at 3:00 to 5:00, right? So we'll change that from K to two. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry. Number five, motion and a second, uh, to appoint, uh, each of the individuals listed below to the designated board appointments, which everyone has in front of them, so I'm not gonna read them. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, I need a motion and a second to approve the appointment of the following internal auditor for the 2021-22 year, Nugent Hausler, CPA, we just dealt with, correct?
We, we just did the five-year RFP for both the internal auditor and the external auditor, so both six and seven are consistent with the results and award from that RFP that we did in March.
Wonderful. Can we combine six and seven there?
You certainly could.
Okay. The, the, how do you say, Bonadillo group, right?
I always get the accent wrong, but Bonadillo, I believe, is correct.
Okay, CPA, so there are CPA, and Nugent Hausler is our CPA in accordance to the RFP. Okay. For the fee, logic C22,000. Can I get a motion and a second? Number six and seven?
For six and seven?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, number eight, motion and a second to recognize that our current contract with Honeywell Law Firm for the following legal services that are all listed here on the agenda for everyone to read, which I will not read. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number nine, similarly, I need a motion and a second to recognize our current contract with Grivin and Forazzo, we see, with the following legal services not to exceed $200 per hour for the duration of the agreement, and all our services at 180. Can I get a motion and a second for the school attorney hourly rate? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, I need a motion and a second to approve the appointment of our physicians and school doctors for the 2021-22 year. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion and a second to approve the following rates of pay, mostly some, it's all related to substitutes, uh, throughout the district. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Number 12, motion and a second to approve the following, uh, official bank depository for the fiscal 21-22 year, M&amp;T Bank, JP Morgan Chase, the Bank of Green County. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion and a second for number 13. Uh, the Board of Education designates the following companies as our school district's investment product for the fiscal year, New York LAF Liquid Asset Fund and US Bank. Motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I could just comment briefly on this. We've been part of NILAP for, um, many years, it's a municipal cooperative arrangement of which Red Oak Central School District is actually the lead agent, that's part of the law that establishes, um, a cooperative like that, somebody has to be the lead agent on the program. But ultimately, what it allows us to do, um, in interest rate environments that are better than the one that we've been in over the last twelve months or so, um, is it allows , uh, participants to be able to deposit monies on a day-in, day-out basis, uh, but because those funds are pooled, uh, you can obtain, uh, CD-like interest rates on day-in, day-out kinds of funds. The investments are all in US treasuries and US treasury purchase agreements, so it's AAA, it's S&amp;P AAA rated. Um, it's, uh, it's something that I recommend that we stay in, we've been in it for quite some time, and it's beneficial. Uh, maybe not so much in a one or two basis point environment like we've been in, but when interest rates go up, it is a beneficial program.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Any questions for Bruce? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14, um, be it resolved, I need a motion and a second that we adopt the Daily Freeman and the Kipsey Journal as the official newspaper to the Red Oak Central School District. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I know, Bruce, you want to talk about this one. Number, uh, 15, I need a motion and a second. Be it resolved, the Board of Education designates the district treasurer as a single authorized signatory of all checks, and also designates the deputy district treasurer as a single authorized signatory of checks. Do you want to skip to that?
Sure. Um, so this is actually modified from the language that we've used in recent reorganization meetings.
Sorry, Bruce, I need a motion before we talk about it. Motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
So we're modifying this language a little bit this year. If you read into the regular agenda, we see that our annual internal audit resulted in a couple of recommendations. Internal audits always result in a couple of recommendations because that's what they get paid to do. And one of the things that they picked up on was that we have been using our treasurer and our deputy treasurer interchangeably to sign checks, and we do that for a couple of reasons. One reason is that about six or seven years ago, an internal auditor came in and said there's too much power concentrated in the treasurer, and we needed to segregate those duties a little bit. Another reason is that if we have them both doing it on a regular basis, they serve as a better backup when one of them is not in attendance. However, we never changed our reorg, uh, resolution, and it has continued to say that the treasurer will sign checks and the deputy treasurer will sign in the absence of the treasurer. So this language modifies to clarify that we can continue with the practice that we've been using for the last six or seven years, which is to have them interchangeably sign, um, and with either of their individual signatures, single signatures on a check, those checks are valid. And then, as it's always been, if we have neither of those people available and we have an emergency, then the district clerk is authorized to sign checks.
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions for Bruce on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 16, I need a motion and a second to approve the adoption of the Board of Education Policy Manual as currently constituted. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? This is always an ongoing, um, thing that we revise all year. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 17, um, motion and a second to approve, uh, superintendent of schools is authorized to certify payrolls, approve budget transfers, 20,000 cumulative limit per year with written report by assistant super. Superintendent may approve conference attendance, agreeable expenses for board members and employees. Uh, superintendent may apply for federal, state, and miscellaneous grants, act as courtesy agent, extend, extend an absence of the assistant superintendent business, which is Bruce, three more days, and sign contracts on behalf of the district limited at 20,000. Can I, can I get a motion? Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, I believe this just rolled over, did I just turn that into? Eighteen, okay. Motion to approve Board of Education of Red Oak, uh, annually delegates the authority to sign contracts up to $20,000 to the superintendent. I think that's right. And the authority to sign occupational therapy, physical therapy, approve special education placement contracts, and there's a lot of interesting information that's accessible on the agenda, torture of looking at every unit. Is there any, can I get a motion and then the first discussion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 19, I need a motion and a second that we authorize the use of personal vehicles by school employees, be reversed at .575 per mile per year. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 20, motion, uh, we have resolved that the Board of Education appoint Bruce Martin, Assistant Super for Business as trustee, and Diane Konig, Personal Assistant, as alternate trustee to represent Red Oak Central School District on the Duchess County BOSEs Workers' Compensation Committee, in accordance with the bylaw set forth by the Duchess County School Workers' Compensation Cooperative. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions or questions? Any comments, Bruce?
So the ne, the next three are all cooperatives that we participate in. The first one that you're working on right now is our self-funded Duchess County Workers' Compensation Consortium. The next one is the Duchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, and the one after that is the New York Liquid Asset Fund, which we've talked a little bit about. Uh, so we have, uh, myself as trustee on both of the first two, with Diane Kaneck as the alternate, and, um, on NILAP, it's just me, and we're just recognizing that I am continuing to be trustee on those three consortiums that we participate in.
Excellent. So why don't we make a motion and a second to approve 2021-22?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, petty cash fund, I need a motion and a second to approve the petty cash funds from the high school all the way to Buschrod for $100. Can I get a motion and a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-four, uh, motion and a second, uh, that the Board of Education find assistant superintendent for business, tax collector, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, internal auditor, and any other district employee in amount of $1 million on a single loss item limit basis, body and personnel. That's just probably part of our insurance.
And it's part of our insurance coverage, correct?
Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion and a second to approve the following, be it resolved, Board of Education appoint upon individuals to serve on committees as indicated below. Mr. Costello as the chairperson, and there's a variety of individuals across the various business, uh, buildings. Can I get a motion and a second for CSE and CPSC appointments?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number 26, cooperating, cooperative bidding with BOSEs.
And you might want to put this one together with 27. We are legally authorized, uh, to comply with purchasing regulations by making purchases through things that have been bid by BOSEs. We are also authorized to participate in, um, purchasing cooperatives like the one referenced in number 27, and actually, we also are allowed now to, uh, by a more recent regulation passed by the state, uh, we're also allowed to kickback on other government contracts, uh, that have been properly bid, uh, in various states and localities around the country. Uh, but the ones that we've officially participated in and have recognized at the reorg meeting are the BOSEs bid and the Clarkstown Central School that's notified, that's identified in 26 and 27.
Thank you, Bruce. So we'll put 26 and 27 together.
First question on, uh, the bidding, especially those, we are required to that basis, we want to get, that's the thing.
No, because we can opt in and out of that as we please. So we can, we can go ahead and do our own bid or purchase from state contract or some other arrangement, um, but we can also analyze the BOSEs bid for items and, and take that where, where it's the best deal for us.
We always have the flexibility.
So we have the flexibility to use it or not. Correct.
Correct.
So Bruce, by combining forces and buying with our PD, we get a better price.
And that is oftentimes the case. One of my favorites is BOSI's does a cooperative supply bid. Recently, it's typically gone to W.B. Mason, and we get excellent discounts there because we participate through the BOSI's bid.
Any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion? All right. I need a motion and a second for 26 and 27.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-eight through 33 are all contracts that we renew annually. The Red Hook Childcare Lease, the BOSI's Contract, the Abilities First, the Greater Hudson Valley and the ARC, Renew ARC, and Renew Contract Transition Specialist, as well as the ASTER Contract. Can I get a motion and a second to review these? Motion. Any discussions or highlights, Bruce, for any of these?
I would just point out that you have two types of items here. So the Red Hook Childcare, the BOSI's, and the ASTER are all situations where folks are renting space in our building. The other three there are actually contracts for services that we obtained from vendors, but they are, they are all contractual arrangements that you'd be approving.
What is the transition specialist?
That is a person at the high school who does a lot of work with transitioning kids from high school into either college replacements or the workforce.
Craig Eganoff, yeah, right?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions?
Bruce, I got the ARC. Why is there no money value to that? That's the third one.
That has fluctuated year to year. There probably should be a money value in there. Is the contract in the back of? I don't know it off the top of my head. I believe the contract itself specifies a dollar value, and we can transfer that into the resolution.
Total cost of the program is $35,142.62. Good catch, Mark. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 34, be it resolved that the Board of Education Revenue Anticipation Note Resolution dated July 14. Bruce, do you want to talk a little bit about this one?
Yes. So we have annually done a revenue anticipation note resolution at the reorganization meeting, but this year I actually contacted our bond attorney and asked her to tighten this up substantially. We rarely have opportunity to use this, but we do still have some outstanding revenues that have not come in related to the auditorium project, our Smart Schools Bond Act, and I see, and we oftentimes, we always have to front money for the IBPA grants and the ESSA grants during the course of the school year. That creates cash flow issues. And now we're going to be the beneficiaries of two fairly large stimulus grants, which are also going to be reimbursable grants, meaning we have to make expenses first and then apply for reimbursement. So I see a higher than usual likelihood that we could run into cash flow situations, depending on what time of year these expenses and revenues end up happening. So by having a revenue anticipation note resolution in place invests in the Board President the ability to sign such a revenue anticipation note document. And by having that in place, it makes it quicker for us if we recognize the need to borrow monies. We don't have to circle back to a board meeting to get the revenue anticipation note resolution in place. It's already there.
Any questions? Is that clear?
Is there a limit or a cap on this?
Well, there is not a limit or a cap in the resolution itself, but the amount you'd be allowed to borrow would be based on a number of factors. One of them would be your ability to demonstrate the need, and the other one would be your ability to demonstrate that the amount that you're borrowing is legitimate anticipated revenue into the future.
And reimbursable.
And that would be part of the justification that you needed the money, that, you know, for example, we have the $1.7 million Prisa grant out there, and if, if we got rapidly undertaking the activities there, we would have to front the money, knowing that it was reimbursable. So that, that would be the justification for doing a revenue anticipation note. What we normally do is we cash flow these things from general funds. So if it were a time of year when we had plenty of cash in the general fund, we certainly wouldn't borrow the money. We would just cash flow it from general fund and wait for the reimbursement.
Who would the notes place with?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Who would the notes place with?
We typically bid those. So we wouldn't know who those notes were going to be placed with now. We would use our fiscal advisor to bid the notes.
Great, thank you. Good questions. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, I need a motion. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That is the conclusion of the reorganization meeting. I need a motion and a second to adjourn to go into our regular board meeting. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, welcome to the annual board meeting. Okay. We're going to start with, we're going to start with Agenda Item Number Two, the Consent Agenda. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. As number 16, Elena would like to incorporate the results of this last election. So it's not on here, but she will add it into the minutes, so just consider that when you're reviewing. And they were on the website all day. And just for Mark and Erin, number 12, these are meetings. Katie, do you want to talk briefly about the CSE/CPSE meetings, so they took the education purposes?
Sure. These are approvals of minutes of meetings that were held for our special education population and including people, so it's a process of boarding.
Okay. The one we have in front of us is correct. Those are correct. You might not know one.
He thinks that we have the promises are correct. 2021.
Bruce, how far out are we from finishing our auditorium meetings? Just curious.
So the auditorium has reached substantial completion. It is essentially finished. I would classify what's remaining as punch list and paperwork, so we do still have a fair dollar amount, I'm willing to say in the $400,000 range, still to be paid out on our prime contracts, but the work is essentially complete. What is, what's really remaining at this point are punch list items and paperwork items to close out those contracts.
$400,000 sounds like a substantial punch list.
Well, in there, one of the, one of the big items is there is a 5% retainage throughout the project, so every bill that we have paid to date has a 5% holdout, and they don't get their retainage until their final payment. So I would have to sit down and look at my records to tell you how much of what I'm estimating is retainage, but we issued eight or about eight and a half million dollars worth of contracts, and every time we paid a payment along the way, there was a 5% holdback in the form of retainage.
Bruce, when this one has invoices listed, do we actually see that?
That, that should be in your electronic packet. Yep. And just for the board's information, we have historic, so we have in the district an internal claims auditor who approves invoices for payment on behalf of the board, and the internal claims auditor provides a monthly report to the board about the claims that she has approved. We have historically had an arrangement where, and it goes, actually, it predates my time in the district, but there was a time back in the late 90s when the board set up a procedure where they wanted to specifically approve payments that came through the capital fund at the board table, and that has continued right to this day. So you will be seeing any invoices that will be paid by, through the capital fund at the table. However, a lot of our operations, general fund, special aid fund, cafeteria, and the like, those invoices get approved at the internal claims audit level inside the district. But yes, in your package, you should be able to see these specific invoices that we're talking about on the agenda.
I had.
Bruce, maybe just refresh this on the BOSI Capital Project.
So the BOSI's Capital Project, which if you drive by the Salt Point Turnpike address, you see it happening down there. The BOSI's Capital Project, the way they funded that was there was an assessment to each of the districts in Duchess County to pay for that, and we independently have financed that project here. There was another option that would have involved a countywide borrowing, but this one, this was less expensive in terms of financing. The Red Hook share overall was just over 1.8 million, and this is our third payment of a three-year payment plan. The first year was something in the neighborhood of $222,000. Last year's payment was $891,000, and this year's payment, which we will make tomorrow, is $707,000, and that will complete the Red Hook share of the funding of the BOSI's Capital Project. Had I had nerves of steel, we would, we borrowed money in June on a, on a bond anticipation note to be sure we had the cash to make this payment. Had I had nerves of steel, we would not have rebonded that. We would have simply paid cash. We're going, we're going to see a surplus of fund balance at the end of this year. But what we did, instead of doing a multi-year borrowing on a serial bond, is we did another bond anticipation note in June. That will come due next June, and I think we'll be in a position to largely or entirely pay off the borrowing that we have against the BOSI's project. The borrowing we did in June was $975,000. It paid the previous year's ban, and it financed, it funded this $707,000. But I'm looking and aiming to try to pay that off when it comes due next June.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We're going to move to Agenda Item Number Three, Personnel. I need a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
Wonderful. Katie, I don't know if you wanted to highlight any special guests in the audience.
You were pleased to welcome Jenna. Jenna is coming to us from Arlington, working in a 35 building. So Jenna. Also very pleased to welcome Kyle Fupista. Kyle will be one of our new physics teachers at the high school, so we're very happy and pleased to welcome Kyle. Then you have Becky Duncan, who is one of our brand new school local workers. She'll be assigned to the high school. So welcome.
Wonderful. Welcome, welcome. We're so happy to have you. This is the fun part of good hiring over the summer. What is the fest, what's the festival coordinator? Is that for the play?
No, the festival coordinator, we have four music teachers who historically do a lot of work leading toward, and I'm going to miss some of these, but things like the county music festival, NISBA, the like. And there is a stipend for those four individuals. Actually, the number in your agenda represents half of the stipend. These were an oversight in the fall that they did not get, last fall that they did not get on. Actually, I wouldn't actually classify them as an oversight. There was confusion about at what level those positions would function in the COVID environment. Ultimately, we believe that half stipends for the three individuals listed would be the appropriate result for those positions for 2021.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. We have a few policies to approve on a second reading level. I need a motion and a second to approve policy number 5640, subject to smoking tobacco and cannabis use. Motion. Second. Any discussion on this policy? From Mark and Erin's knowledge, we receive a lot of sort of boilerplate policies from year one BOSI's, and we review them in a first read, need to adapt them to the redo, and then we present them in a second read for final adaptation by the board.
Have you made any changes from the first read?
I don't believe so. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item Number Five, second read, policy 6151, a drug-free workplace. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item Number Six, second reading, policy 6150, subject alcohol, drugs, and other substances. Can I get a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item Number Seven, second reading, policy 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item Number Eight, second reading and approval, weapons in school and the Gun Through Schools Act. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have Agenda Item Number Nine, second reading and approval of policy 5661, Wellness. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. The next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Ten, Board of Education Review. This is our time to speak. I guess the first topic we wanted to talk about was Board of Ed meetings. In the reorg, we confirmed what the dates and times, but I believe there's board members who want to have discussion on how we should move forward with board meetings, so I opened it up to the board.
Yeah, I can start the discussion or continue it. We discussed whether we could continue using Zoom as an option for the public to be able to attend the meetings. That would be in addition to in-person, which is of course required, and to allow Zoom to be the platform that is used in order for people, people to be able to give public comment in real time during our meetings. So that way, what you're looking over on the agenda, what we're discussing, they're able to make those contributions right in the moment, as opposed to... to make those contributions right in, in the moment as opposed to having to submit them in advance. I feel that's the most effective way for people to remain involved and active participants in what's happening with the board and the decisions we're making.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else have any comments?
I echo what Jen says. I fully support keeping Zoom as an option for our public. I think it's a great way to stay connected for them to be actively involved, informed. And one of the few positive things I think that we shared in this very challenging year last year, and I personally feel it would be a disservice to our community to not continue. I understand that it has technical challenges. I have faith in our executive partners that they will overcome that. And I truly hope it is something that we will maintain.
Can I ask Bruce, just for the public, we did seek the advice of our legal counsel on this topic, just where we stand. The executive order from the governor ended virtual meetings, but there is the ability for individuals, school boards, to determine how they want to pursue the course going forward. So as we do with many things, we did reach out to Honeywell, our legal counsel. I'm going to have Bruce maybe summarize for the public his thoughts and suggestions. I think it's important.
So we did talk with the attorney about this concept. And we essentially asked the attorney if using the Zoom format with public interaction would be considered a legal public meeting under the law now in the absence of the executive order. And I would have to classify the attorney's response as not conclusive. However, in the end, the attorney's recommendation was that with the expiration of the executive order, the board go back to the method that they used to use pre-COVID. And the attorney advised that we not use the interactive Zoom format. They also suggest that because we learned a lot during the pandemic, that in the future there may be legislation clarifying whether or not an interactive Zoom format would be or would not be an acceptable, not that they're conducting a public board meeting. But again, I would classify the attorney's advice as somewhat inconclusive, but the recommendation was that we not use interactive Zoom technology for board meetings.
And can you comment on what would make a board meeting potentially not considered legal?
Well, so I think it would be a matter of interpretation. So if, if we were having a board meeting in this room with a minimal Zoom element, I think that that would probably lean in the direction, this is my opinion, by the way.
It's of value.
But if, if, if we were having a, a board meeting in this room with a minimal Zoom remote component, I think that that, that would probably be a legal public board meeting. But if that meeting transitioned into a meeting that was largely occurring on Zoom with a more minimal in-public component, I think that it would arguably be an illegal board meeting because board meetings should be happening in public and not in a remote format. So, you know, so I, I think that there's a matter of degree there at which that Zoom participation could be deemed acceptable. And then I think there would be a matter of degree there where that Zoom participation might at this point render that meeting illegal. Again, my opinion, the attorney's advice was somewhat inconclusive, but the ultimate recommendation was don't, don't do interactive Zoom meetings at this point.
Bruce, when you say somewhat inconclusive, because the language was, was needed?
Because he did not say, he did not definitively say, if you use interactive Zoom, you will have an illegal meeting.
But, but maybe further legislation will come down the pipe, that's what he's suggesting. I'll, I'll speak my opinion. You know, I agree with Maggie and Jen that, you know, one of the silver linings for sure was public access to board meetings. I have concerns though about how that affected meeting management. And also personally, I do better from a human to human response. I do think a compromise, in my opinion, you know, it's really about the platform. And I, I hear the idea that Zoom public comments are really, I think, the core of this sort of discussion. And I understand that value, but I'm not sure I would measure it as, as, as what needs to happen in order to also reach people in a different way. For example, tonight we're live streaming. That is a very common methodology shared amongst the schools. So people are home in real time. They can email ahead-of-time comments. And I would like to figure out a way that they could potentially email in present time comments. I found that Zoom, they are, Elena said they are, oftentimes people did end up sending emails anyway. They preferred that method. I also think people tended to read from something that they typed when they spoke. So I do think that, again, I'm comfortable with legality. I do, I haven't thought that the last two hybrid meetings were hugely successful. I actually think it hurt the people who were in person. Mark was a candidate running for the board during the introduction. And on Zoom, the candidates all heard each other very well, but he was not well represented. And it delayed the meeting by 40 minutes. And it is technology and those things can be worked out. But I'm not sure if I believe it enough to, to pursue just Zoom. I think there are other alternatives that allow real-time accessibility that can then allow the board to continue their governance and what their job is, and also welcome public comments in a meaningful way. Those are my thoughts.
I appreciate hearing from everybody. We did have a lengthy meeting with the lawyer, which was a step. I walked away from it feeling that this was a board decision. There isn't a tremendous amount of clarity. And for me personally, when in doubt, I side with what I think is going to be a benefit to the, to the community. I understand all of the challenges. I would like to hear if possible from each board member before we come to a decision. I personally am in favor of continuing keeping Zoom for our community.
Does every board member want to speak or no? Okay, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, I don't mind speaking. You know, having taught on Zoom and in person at the same time, I'm fully aware of the challenges. And yes, Zoom has its values, it really does. But I think also encouraging our community to get involved and come in person and to have that public comment, I think is really, is really important. And the management challenges are just, I mean, it was really difficult having, you know, be on Zoom during our interviews and missing out on what Mark was sharing. So I have to say that I do think it would be a challenge to people.
I find in favor of in person. I, I agree with Erin at the time that I found at least the last two Zoom meetings absolutely, I, I think it would be better for this community. And I think being here in person, you read the audience, you get to know one another. There's that personal connection and bonding that, that makes place. If we can have the ability to livestream and even have emails submissions of questions and that, that sometimes is more important because then you can target those alarms to the appropriate person. It's not sometimes necessarily a board situation that maybe needs to go to administration. Also, I think, I have to look at the workloads that we asked of Elena and the, and John, who've come after working all day long. And there's meeting notes and transcriptions and, and making sure that everything is legally documented and properly filed. So to them for, for the work that we do. And, but I think as we come back, it's also learning how to work with one another again in person. I mean, we spent a year and a half on everything in Zoom. And we need to make those connections and work together in order to, to moving the mission of this district forward. And so I say livestream with, with email submissions, then, you know, it has to make it work. Done it before, we'll do it again.
Johanna, if I may, the, just the last point that you made about as we transition back to school, it's going to be some, you know, stressful times. And I think, I think coming in person, speaking, even though it creates something enormous anxiety for people, I think it allows the board to see the emotion that's conveyed better. I think someone logging onto Zoom and giving us all their opinion doesn't really convey that human sense of being in person. Not to undermine what, what Jen and Maggie are saying, that it was a great vehicle at the time of the crisis. But I think, I think I'm in agreement with the livestream and maybe some type of an instant message format where somebody can reach us real time. Not, not to hammer us, but to, you know, if there's a point that we're missing or something, I, I think I'm in agreement with, I think I'm in agreement with Kate and Erin and Johanna on this one.
I spent a lot of time thinking about this issue since, but it's been a while. I've spent a lot thinking about the issue because I think back over the last year and on one hand, there's a significant change in participation. And at times, there were people who didn't speak and acted how they thought about the issue. Very often here, on the other hand, some of our board meetings have been quite disruptive and unfortunately, dudes like some are restricted in their making sure. I think of course that people can watch the board meetings, live streaming, the ability to send messages, not just in the face of, you know, hopefully during meetings if the issue comes up. One of the things that I brought back over the last year, there were significant changes in the involvement, obviously, kind of logging through COVID when there's still some COVID and a lot of that probably could have been better directed in town halls and in town halls. And there was a very hard time for different personnel than elsewhere. So I think one thing that we're going to get back to evolve for the next year is we think about how they should be in town hall format and maybe in some of those to make sure that we have that, that channel of communication. We did have a lot of current, several hundred, a lot of state control on, several hundred people. And then very well, and then we have a significant amount of participation. We have a number of people in the board that I can, we'll have to, we'll, we'll, we'll have to, you know, better reflect on the thing along that, blocking, supporting, you know, this is a, this is a structure, probably for the life of the board, the life of the team. So we consider more or younger people, you know, if they have questions.
You know, as I'm sitting here, Elaine is saying that even on the livestream, there is a Q and A feature that she can look into that could even make it more real time. So, you know, what I'm hearing is that everyone is in agreement that we all very much value public participation in board meetings and that we welcome public participation in board meetings and we welcome public comment. The, the discussion comes down to which virtual format, I guess, I mean, we can either be formal, it sounds to me like the majority, unless you want to do a formal vote, sound like the methodology of livestream with the ability to real-time comment, comment in advance, and then Elaine is going to look into this Q and A. Oh, it's on. Oh, hello. And she's gotten two emails with comments during this time. Seems to be the majority. So do you think we need a formal vote or it sounded like the majority feel livestream? Go ahead, or any other comments? Go ahead, Jen.
I appreciate that that can actually be a live streaming, emotive communication. I think there is a piece missing though, is that we're not getting to see who's on the other side of that. It's not getting to see that, so it kind of cuts us off from the rest. Whereas with Zoom, you can see who's at the board meetings, when they're speaking. We can theoretically see these people and can be able to have somewhat of a connection with them and be with us more so than in the scenario where they're just watching us and typing into a box. We're not getting to see, would be a part of that. I mean, that's an important aspect of, of it to consider.
Okay, so are there any other comments? Because I guess, I think I probably will just call when the vote is called. Are there any other comments? Okay, so I guess all in favor of Zoom, if you raise your hand.
Aye.
All in favor of livestream? Aye. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we will move forward with the livestream and the real-time comments. Okay, the next topic we need to discuss is the Board of Ed Retreat. I think this will be very critical given all our new members and a year that we're coming off of. So I would love if everybody could take out, take out their calendars and we can try to find a date that is mutual and works for everybody. And, you know, in the past, someone asks, what are the types of programs and topics that we will work? This is a really nice time for the board to come together and restate, you know, their mission and vision and goals and protocols for the year. You know, how we want to conduct ourselves, how we want to conduct board meetings, you know, reconnect with the DLT work of the mission and vision, do some board development, board bonding. We tend to bring in some special speakers. So there's, you know, definitely meaningful opportunities for us to come together. Do we have any dates? Does anybody have a recollection, a recollection of any dates? No, Maggie, you're usually good with dates and memory. Nothing so far?
I thought we were doing something on the second day with the Advent on August 10th?
No, that, I think the Advent Retreat, we'll just invite them to a breakfast and it's optional. I don't, that's, that's separate to us, right? Kitty's looking at me with swited eyes. She's like, we do not want you there. This is our retreat. Back off. I mean, do we, do we want to try to do it before September? Is that feasible? Is everybody on vacation in August? And we need to do the board docs training. Elena tried to sneak that in today. It's way too much, way too much.
I think I need to, if we do the retreat before, it's weird.
How much time?
You know, we may have a challenge behind, maybe they can get August.
So maybe what I'll do is let's look at week by week in August, and I'll say like, is anyone away on the first week in August? August 2nd through the 6th? Russ. Okay. Okay, what about the last week in July? July 26th through 30th? Bruce is here? Bruce, you're not invited to ours, aren't you?
Well, right. I, I am not here the last week of July, 13 o'clock.
Okay.
And there are two days, 9:00, 11:00.
I'm away also for the rest of the joy.
Okay, fine. How about the week of August 9th? Who's away? Erin? Okay. How about the week of August 16th through 20th? Bruce, we know 18, 19. Is everybody here the 16th and 17th?
I'm gone.
Bruce.
Yes.
Nina. Doesn't matter. Okay. Then I'm gone. How about, is anybody here Friday, August 27th?
I'm here.
Is everybody here? Maggie's not here. Okay. All right. How about, what's a, what's next week? No, I'm gone. Okay, so the August.
August 26th? 25th?
Is that a Sunday? Would you want to do a weekend? No?
No, I'm back in front of the 27th.
But other, Bruce, who, who had a problem with the last week of July?
Wait, was it just for, oh, Johanna's away the last week of July.
I mean, I, it depends on what day.
Will you tell us?
Are we talking full days or are we just talking afternoons?
I mean, I think it's collaborative. I would say like, you know, pretty much a full day, like a.
How about August 26th? I think that works. Maggie's just drawn 27.
I can't do the last week, I'll start working. Okay, oh, you're, you're out. You are enjoyable. All right.
In July, on the 26th, that, that we, if you tell me the day, then I can make arrangements for that day.
Okay. And Bruce isn't here and you're not here.
I don't know.
Do you have to be there for him? I mean, we'd love you to be, but, okay. Is Janet here?
Yes.
Okay. If Maggie, I mean, Johanna, if you could be flexible on Monday, the 26th, that might, it looks like that might be our, because Janet starts working what?
July.
July, July.
Yeah, just let me know and, and I'll.
Tell the powers to the.
What?
I'll tell the powers to you and I just have to.
Tuesday, the 27th, does that work for anybody?
That works.
Could you make that work?
Yes.
Johanna? Tuesday, the 27th?
Yep.
Do we have a winner?
We have a winner, winner chicken dinner.
Afternoons for me are fine. I do not know that I can get up and work any morning.
Okay, so should we, could you, could we do like a 12 o'clock lunch start?
Definitely.
Okay, and then maybe go to like 5? Okay, if we have to go later, we might have to go to 6. Okay, so we are Tuesday, July 27th, 12 o'clock. Is this exciting public? This is exciting. Thank you for bearing with us. Favouriting us. Okay. We do not have a venue, but we will, we will work hard to make it. Could be why we are. We'll find one. We'll find one.
I would suggest either here or maybe at the community centers. We keep it local. I know after work I'll be able to get there hopefully on time by 12.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. And if anybody on the board has a particular topic that they were, maybe interested in, let's make this a collaborative agenda. You know, maybe I'll put some framework together with Janet and then put it out to everybody and you let us know if there's topics. Does that sound like reasonable? Marvelous. Okay, are there any other topics from the board before we move on?
I'd be interested to get just a quick update on plans for reopening, discussing development, change, laws around, in the building, past area.
So I can start if maybe Dr. Summers would like to chip in as well. The guidance is still developing. There's no solid new guidance for the fall. We have continued to ease in terms of the restrictions related to summer school. So as we were getting ready to start summer school, for example, we were still talking about indoor social distancing and mask wearing for everyone in the building when, when classes were in session. I believe it was the first day of summer school that that guidance changed and we were relieved of the mask wearing mandate indoors. So the trend at the moment seems to be toward loosening of guidelines, but there have been no clear definitive guidelines set up for the fall. So some of the big questions will be masks or no masks, social distancing, no social distancing, will we or will we not be required or allowed to do remote instruction? I think those are some of the key questions for which there really are no guidance or answers yet for us, for us the fall.
Superintendent Warden did speak last board meeting that we look to fully reopen and follow any guidance that came out, but at this moment, like we did, we've not had any clear guidance other than what happened with Thursday's summer school. So, but we are looking to support our educational community and work with it.
And I, I think we read that schedules are being managed wrong. I mean, I think everybody's sort of moving ahead as normal, right?
Yeah, I, I left that part out, but yes, thank you. Janet has clearly said that her intent is a normal reopening in September and, and I would agree that the building principals are headed in that direction as we speak.
During the school year, we get notifications if there was a COVID case in the district. Is that still, still how it's working for summer academy and summer school? If there's a case that's from the district?
If, if, I, I'm not sure that that's still required, but if that were to happen, and fortunately it hasn't, we would do, we would do a notification on that.
Good.
Sounds like a lot to still be.
Yeah. That seems to be the world we live in, right? Okay. Any other topics or questions? Okay, great, thank you. Agenda item number 11, recognition of visitors. If there's someone in person who would like to speak, we welcome and invite you to the microphone to just introduce yourself, let us know who you are, and we do ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes and we will be listening. So we welcome any speakers here today.
Hello. First of all, happy birthday, Johanna. And congratulations. And congratulations to the new board members, Erin, Mark, and also my sincere, if only on your election. My name is Brad Mitchell. I'm a longtime taxpayer and father of a student graduate of Red Oak School District. And I met with superintendent and Bruce, vice superintendent, five months ago, four months ago. And one of the issues that I brought up with them, I'd like to go over with you briefly. I started by what we agree on and I think the most, A, I have a five pointer. A, the most important thing is welfare education improvement for our children in the district. B, that we all hate and abhor racism. C, that there is some racism still in the United States and there has been in the past and there still is some racism today in America. D, that the effective use of taxpayer monies in communities as action of students' education is critically flawed. And E, that racism has diminished over time, such as in my father, my father's lifetime and in our own lifetimes, it has diminished dramatically. One of the other issues I discussed with them was your consultant, there's been higher education elements and I mentioned that Anthony Kim in the presentation to the board, I think it was on 10/7/20, promoted a violation of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and numerous violations of the Red Oak School District policies in his introduction to the board. The video on 10/7 of the meeting from minute point 2445 to 2737 shows the founder of education elements, Anthony Kim, responding to board presidents, question on a policy change that needed from PDI implementation. Mr. Kim responds to the story about another district where presumably a white teacher was fired or needed to be fired. And the district was having trouble finding a person of color to replace them. If that couldn't be, if they couldn't find a person of color to replace a teacher, it would be, quote, perpetuating the same placement. I think on this basis, you're promoting a violation of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and I think you should be, consider very seriously canceling the contract with education elements. And I would propose that you do that immediately to save taxpayer monies. This cannot be continued. You cannot violate the 1964 Civil Rights Act and many of the policies of Red Oak School District in any way. Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the board? Okay, then I'll turn it over to Elena, who I believe has some comments.
Okay, so the first one is from Kat Viega. Hello, I'm writing basically with the same comment as last meeting to request that the board permit live comments for virtual attendees as in-person attendees get. The board president made a point to confirm last meeting that virtual attendees have been permitted to speak and that my noted concern was unfounded, but the board had letters communicated prior to that last meeting and this meeting clearly stated the opposite and say all virtual comments must be submitted prior, whereas in-person attendees can speak freely during the permitted time. I also just reconfirmed that rule with the district board. I'm begging you once again to rescind this restriction and keep virtual participation consistent with in-person rules. Thank you and happy summer. This is from Josh Barfield. Dear board members, I'm writing in support of the continued use of a virtual platform for board meetings, not only to view the proceedings, but also to allow for public comment in real time. What we see in use tonight is clearly not that. Over this last year, we have repeatedly heard voices from across our community vigorously urging the board to maintain this option. In fact, it has been one of the areas of greatest consensus during public comment. In continuing this evidently critical practice, we have an opportunity to align what we say with what we do. Values are only as compelling as the actions that support them. The board now has a chance to uphold its commitment to these values and allow real time communication of public comment to continue. It is worth noting that the district is now involved in a long-term effort to address issues of equity and inclusion, but there be no mistake that this issue falls squarely within that undertaking. Limiting our community's ability to watch and participate in public comment in real time is not only inequitable, but runs contrary to everything we've learned and heard over these last eighteen months. Last eighteen months. This is from Amy Smith. I write to express my dismay that tonight's board of education meeting limits remote participants' access to public comment time and moves the meeting to start an hour earlier. I'm concerned that these are initial steps toward making the board meetings more restrictive. I add my voice to those asking President Corpus to retain a virtual attendance and participation element for all board meetings. As village resident with a job that frequently makes it impossible for me to attend Wednesday night meetings in person, having a remote participation option is important to me. Indeed, having remote options provides inclusive access for parents of small children, people who can't get out easily for any reason, and for those of us who work schedules, don't have flexibility at times. District's new mission and vision statements emphasize inclusion, compassion, and possibility and maintaining inclusive access by keeping remote participation and in keeping with these powerful statements. I ask that the board to act in ways that support the district's goals for itself, starting with their own meetings. Thank you. This is from Mel Corca Carval. I believe that allowing hybrid participation is key in keeping community engagement and to allow participants and parents like myself to attend meetings and to engage fully, even if my son has bedtime, my spouse is traveling, or if I have a conflicting commitment. I believe it is only illegal for board members to appear in a non-publicly, publicly accessible location. I do not think you should publish, punish, courteous, employ parents who attend regularly, virtually, just because one unruly and unpleasant parent disrupted the meeting once.
Okay. And just checking to make sure if there's anyone else. That's it. Okay, thank you, everyone, for submitting your thoughts. We did have an extensive discussion about it and we do appreciate your feedback, so thank you. Okay, um, agenda item number 12, adjournment. Is there anything else? Motion? Somebody needs to go celebrate a birthday. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor? Hi, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.